Levin, our present, your honor, and Alderman Dweane is excused.
All right, we have a quorum and we'll continue. If you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as we approach this holiday season, we thank you for the blessings you've bestowed upon us as a city and upon our families throughout this year. While we continue to seek your guidance as we lead this community, we also ask for your guidance as we work to help our neighbors. During this holiday season, we're reminded that it is in giving that we receive. Let us, as city council, give our best to understand and help those who live in our community. Help us give our best to the homeless, that through our efforts, they'll find a safe and affordable housing. Help us give our best to those who are looking to seek employment, that they find income and opportunity to support themselves and their loved ones. Help us to give our best to those who long for a sense of purpose, and they find contentment and happiness in themselves and in our community. As we look to you and to our community, help us work together with patience and respect and wisdom of knowing that with your guidance, we can indeed lift the lives of those who call Green Bay home. We ask your blessings on all those who serve this great city, especially those serving on the USS Green Bay. We ask this in your name, amen. All right, with that, I'll look for an approval of the minutes of the November fourteenth meeting. There's a motion by Alderman Nicholson, seconded by Alderson Dorf, for the approval of the minutes. Any things you want to change, correct? Seeing no lights, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, the ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Now, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
It's not approved.
Right, there's a motion by Alderman Sladek, seconded by Alderman Scannell to approve the agenda. Here you want to talk about seeing no lights, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, the ayes have it, and the agenda before you has been approved.
Report by the mayor?
Really just one item, and that's just to thank all of you and our Parks Department for the celebration of life that was put on for Donnie Kramer. It, you know, we're going to miss her, and, but she, as I said there, and as we talked about a lot, was just a very dedicated employee who loved parks. She, forty years here, she never looked for another job, she never was interested in anything but parks and recreation, and I think it was really a great honor for her. Her Sherry and her mom and family were very, very pleased. And Jason, I want to thank you, Dan, James, and all of you for participating in that. It was a great tribute to a great person. And that concludes my report.
We're on to announcements.
We'll begin with Alderman Mark Steyer.
Thank you, your honor. I'd also like to echo those comments, mayor, about Donnie. I've known Donnie since nineteen eighty-one. I worked with near her for twenty-five years, just a great, great person and very dedicated, and we will definitely miss her. I'd also like to give kudos to the Southwest High School musical director, Brandon Rockstroh, on his premier musical play entitled "The Book of Empty Pages" that was played last week. It touched on societal issues such as alcoholism, domestic abuse, special needs, health care, and neighborhood activism, among others. It was a great play, and I appreciate all those efforts. I'd also like to give kudos to Director Gurneer and Chris Pearlott and his folks for coming through on another sweep of leaves. You made many, many citizens happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I can echo what you said. I once saw that "Book of Empty Pages." You know, Brandon wrote that? Wrote it, wrote the score? Oh, my, it was awesome. Any other announcements? All right, Chris, do you? Go ahead.
Just a reminder, you can pick up your paperwork to run for Alderson, judge, or school board in the clerk's office, or get them on the Wisconsin Elections Commission's website at elections.wi.gov. A campaign registration statement needs to be filed no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January second, two thousand and eighteen, and has to be filed before campaign funds are collected or spent, or before nomination papers are submitted. Statement of non-candidacy needs to be filed on or before December twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen, at 5:00 PM. The only to notify will extend nomination paper deadline seventy-two hours for that office.
All right, thank you. Let's continue.
We're on to appointment. Public Arts Commission, Tiffany Bowles.
All right, there's a motion by Alderman Nicholson, seconded by Alderman Denning, Alderman Nanning, to approve the appointment of Tiffany Bowles to the Public Arts Commission. Discussion here, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed nays, ayes have it, and that's been confirmed. Thank you.
We're on to referral of petitions and communications. On page one of your packet, you have all petitions and communications received by the clerk's office by noon on Thursday. We will now accept any late communications you may have.
All right, we'll begin with Alderman Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one for protection and welfare. To utilize a new or amend an existing littering ordinance to address ongoing issues with free newspapers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Joe Moore?
Thank you, mayor. This is for the Finance Committee. Regarding the Hotel Northland audit being conducted by the receiver, I request copies of the audit be given to each council and RDA member, and a summary of public funds used be presented to the Finance Committee by the receiver or an appointee of the receiver to exclude any city staff member. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mark Steyer?
Thank you, your honor. This is to inspection that the owner of a property who desires to construct a fence on their property needs to have a certified survey of their property before beginning construction.
All right, thank you. Alderman Guy Zima?
Thank you, your honor. I'm submitting a communication in behalf of David Bartikovsky, who's writing to the mayor and common council requesting that the city of Green Bay consider constructing a set of decorative metal arches identifying the dual entrances of the historic area of the Broadway Business District. I guess that would go to redevelopment authority.
Right, thank you. Chris, do you have any late communications?
No, I do not.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion. There's a motion by Alderman Tom Sladek, and seconded by Alderman Mark Steyer to refer all petitions and communications to the proper authorities. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed nays, that motion has passed.
Reports for council action. Report of the Plan Commission meeting held November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
All right, we have a motion by Alderman Nanning, seconded by Alderman Scannell for approval of the Green Bay Plan Commission, as stated, for the meeting of November thirteenth. Are there any items in this report you wish to handle separately? Number one? Okay, hearing none others, all in favor of the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed nays, ayes have it, all items have been approved with the exception of item one. What are your wishes regarding item one? There's a motion to approve Alderman Moore, seconded by Alderman Weary. Alderman Scannell?
Thank you, your honor. I spoke with Pastor Rico, and he's fine with holding this, and I thank him for his patience and cooperation. Since this came through committee, a number of business owners and property owners and some of the employees have come forward with some concerns, and thanks for the, with the help of Jeff Merkis, we've arranged to have some meetings with Pastor Rico at the Transformation House, and we hope to clean that all up, clear it all up. I also appreciate Chief Smith giving up a couple of fine officers, Captain Lox and Officer Van Handel, who'll be there, and hopefully we can pick this up at our next meeting without any, any problem at all and attend to it. So my motion is to hold this until our next meeting.
All right, so we have a motion by Alderman Scannell, seconded by Alderson Dorf to hold this item until December nineteenth. Anybody else? Seeing no other lights, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed nays, the ayes have it, that item will be taken up at the December nineteenth meeting. We're now on to the report of the Green Bay Plan Commission. What are your wishes regarding this report? It's a motion to approve Alderman Scannell, seconded by Alderson Dorf to approve the report of the Green Bay Plan Commission for the meeting held on Monday, November twenty-seventh. Any items on this report you wish to handle separately?
Number one.
Number one? Are you sure it's, three is?
I'm sorry.
Right. Number three. Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none others, all, there's a motion, seconded, to approve this report with the exception of item three, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed nays, ayes have it, all items have been approved with the exception of item three. What are your wishes regarding item three? There's a motion to approve Alderman Scannell, seconded by Alderman Weary. Alderman Galvin? Guy, can you turn off your light?
Thank you, your honor. I'm taking one last shot here. The commission approved to take this, the properties listed here, and rezone them to commercial. The neighbors in that area have still, are still contacting me. They don't want to see this turned into commercial property. They would like to see it remain as is, as residential retail. They think that, and as I have stated before, that there's possibility this property could be developed in the future. There's some development going for residential right around the corner from there, and I think the Planning Commission has opened the door for the rest of the properties along that corridor to be changed from residential retail to all commercial. If we were, you look at what's happened to other areas of the city when this has been done piecemeal, once you open that door, one piece of property starts, it's much easier to start taking the rest of the property and start zoning it commercial. The neighbors want a residential area, they do not want a commercial area where they're living, and they're very afraid of the encroachment that this is going to start causing in their residence, residential area. I think we have to look beyond the proposal that Mr. Goldman has made here. I've got nothing against him or his business. I would be against this, no matter what it was, if it was going to be rezoned to commercial. And it's, I don't think it brings any benefit to the area, other than getting rid of some very dilapidated properties that the city should be holding the owner to fixing up and/or removing, and I think that would, if there's any residents that are in favor of Mr. Goldman's proposal, it's because he gets rid of those properties, and I don't think that this is the best way to come to a solution like that. So I'm asking for consideration to deny this and remain residential retail. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Vanderleest?
Thank you, Mayor Schmidt. I was at that Planning Commission, and it was a five, I think it was a five to one vote to let this project move forward. Mr. Goldman owns the property on the corner, and he wants to expand the next few lots over, and he's going to remit all those properties that have been sitting there for many, many years. I think we should give him the opportunity to move forward with his business. He's not asking the city for any financial money, and I feel that it'd be very good for the city to clean up this area, and he's going to do a good job, I feel, from looking at his other property and what he's done already. I think that this deserves to be granted. That's my request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to Alderman Vanderleest. If you turn your light off, we'll go to Alderman Steyer.
Thank you, your honor. I was also at that meeting, and yes, it was a five to one vote. It's a tough one, you know, and I'm looking at the fact that, you know, I think the plans that Mr. Goldman came up with, along with Dan Rorty, are very, very good. I'm just not sure it's the right area. I listened to our planning director and plan commission staff on it, they were against it. I'm listening to what Alderman Galvin says about his own area, and who's to say what could develop in that area? But once you open it up to commercial, who's to say that other areas along Mason will also turn to commercial, and forever, it'll forever change that. So as much as I hate to do it, I concur with Alderman Galvin, and I do not want to see this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Joe Moore?
Thanks. Could I just ask what happened with the opportunity for this to just be a conditional use permit rather than actually changing the zoning?
Dr. Vonck?
Sure. So in order to have a conditional use permit, right now, the properties, the parcel that Mr. Goldman owns on the corner of Baird and Mason is zoned commercial. The other properties in question, just to the west, are zoned single-family at the moment, and given the base single-family zoning, we would not allow, does not permit for, a conditional use permit for this type of use. You can get a CUP for other uses, but you cannot get a CUP for a auto or a commercial-type use with the single-family zoning underlying. So that's why, in order to make this happen, what's first needed is that comp plan amendment before you this evening, basically to change the designation of this area from medium-intensity to commercial.
You say it's zoned, right? Those other properties are zoned single fam, are they zoned single-family residential, which would be R1, or are they zoned medium-intensity retail office? I mean, isn't that two different designations?
Sure. The zone, now, the entitlement zoning is single-family, R1. The comp plan says, in terms of what we'd like to see here in the future, is that medium-intensity. So if Mr. Goldman or another applicant would come forward with a request to upzone for something like, that would include, you know, uses stated in the comp plan of that medium-intensity, we would support it. The quest here is basically a level above that medium-intensity to straight-up commercial, and that's why we're going through this process right now.
Okay, well, look, I'm in, I'm in support of this project, and, you know, the reasons that I am are that, look, again, as Mr. Vanderleest had just said, there's no city assistance here. Mr. Goldman's providing some decent paying jobs to come in here, reconstructing the sidewalks, all at his expense as well, which that definitely needs to be done, tearing down the existing buildings, which are at his cost. And quite honestly, if this project doesn't go through, we'll put a raise of repair order on it. City will end up tearing them down and putting liens on the property, and, I mean, that's, look, are we ever going to collect on that? I don't know. But it will be at the taxpayer pennies to tear down those buildings. And then, look, I think really any project, I've seen some of the Facebook posts about why not some nice retail with some residential above it and stuff. Well, we sit in this council and we argue every single residential project that wants to come into the city, and the public comes up one after another and stands at the podium and says, "Not in my backyard, not in my backyard, not in my backyard." I think really any project that gets proposed there is going to have some sect of neighbors that come up and say, "We don't want residential right here," or "We don't want commercial, we don't want a restaurant, we don't want..." That's why we got elected. We got elected to make these decisions, because some of the decisions we make aren't going to be the most popular with the neighbors, but they most, they benefit the city in the best way, and that's the way we need to look at this. Thank you.
I thank you. Alderson Dorf?
Thank you, your honor. So I was not able to be at that meeting because protection welfare was at the same time, and I spoke with Mr. Goldman prior to the meeting, and because I wasn't there, I wonder if I could make a motion to open the floor to hear from Mr. Goldman and to see what he has to propose.
All right, so we have a motion by Alderson Dorf, seconded by Alderman Nanning, to open the floor to hear from interested parties. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, ayes have it. The floor is now open to hear from interested parties, and we're discussing item three, which is the amendment to the comprehensive plan for East Mason and the corner of South Baird. If you would like to come up, anyone, and speak to this issue, maybe just a little bit on what you're doing, and then we'll see if there's any questions from the council.
Thank you. I'm Dan Goldman from Dan Goldman Cars and Trucks, as we met last time. I didn't really have a planned speech to give to you tonight, but one thing I was, I was thinking strongly about is the car business is the only business I know. I grew up in it, my father was a car dealer, and alls I can do is make the best offer I possibly can to the city of Green Bay, because I can't change the business that I am. It's the, it's the only thing I know how to do, and I, and I, there's nothing else I want to do. I've made a lot of offers here to the city. I just brought the list out one more, one more time, I'll quick go through them. It's condemned in vacant property with the exception of one house, and we want to improve it, and we want to make it first class, and if you look at any of my facilities now, I have to tell you, if there's a flaw, I'm on it right away. In fact, there's one on my, my car lot on East Mason and Bellevue Street that, I know I'm the only one that notices it, and I'm fixing it. But, but to start with, we're closing off the driveways. There's four entrances here on these properties, we're closing all four off. There was four on the corner of East Mason and Baird Street, I closed two of them off. So I, I think that's, that's a benefit to the city, it's definitely safer. Again, as you just mentioned, sir, jobs are going to start at fifteen dollars an hour, that's our lowest-paying job, and frankly, we pay bonuses when the store does well, and the store does well just about every single month. We'll construct a new facility for two thousand and thirty, I think that'll strongly help the property tax, I know it will. Green space guidelines, we're not applying for one single variance, we're going to leave the trees in the front, we're going to leave the green space, and my wife loves to plant flowers in big pots, we have them on East Mason and Bellevue Street, we're planning to do it here anyway. As you pointed out, sir, we're not asking for any tax dollars. There'll be no abrasive lighting, our lighters will be more dim than the city lights, and we will not have an intercom system, it'll be as quiet as you can run a business. And then, we've had a lot of support in the neighborhood, and our strongest support is the, is the neighbors that live across the street from our proposed extension at Dan Goldman Trucks. And as you said, we'll be replacing the sidewalk, and frankly, you know, we're going to be there for a long time. We have a, an existing business here in Green Bay, half, over half of our business is repeat customers. So we're going to make it, it's not a deal where someone goes in, and I hope they make it or not make it, no, we will make it. And last but not least, the most inexpensive I can run this truck lot is a hundred thousand dollars per month, that means we'll be spending a hundred thousand dollars every single month with other businesses in the city of Green Bay, and frankly, that's a conservative number. Again, this is the strongest offer we, we can make to the city right up front, and it's the business I love, and it's the business I'm in, and that's, that's the best I can do.
All right. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Hang on, Alderson Dorf?
Thank you for presenting that. That, that answers my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Galvin? Hang on.
Mr. Goldman, you're going to build a new facility in two thousand and thirty? By two thousand and thirty?
We're very excited to do that, yes.
I guess I would ask Dr. Vonck, is there any way that we can hold him to that? Once we grant the commercial zoning and he buys the property?
So, not with the motion tonight, that would just be to amend the comp plan when the zoning would come through. The way to do that through the zoning process would be through a planned unit development, that you'd be able to specify some specific stipulations in there. If it's just a straight rezoning to a C2, we would not be able to do that unless there's some type of separate agreement outside of that.
Okay, and I would ask Mr. Gurneer, the sidewalk, if the sidewalk's in disrepair, who's responsible for fixing it by city ordinance?
That would be the adjacent property owner.
Okay, so if he buys it, it's his, he's got to fix it anyway?
That is correct.
Okay. I, I guess, you know, what I'm hearing, again, nothing against you, nothing against your business, I just don't think that, once again, a couple of Aldermen have already said, we've got a problem here, and the solution to the problem is to rezone it commercial. My concern, again, is that, is this how we're going to handle every problem that we have in the city, is to take residential property, and when it's blighted or it's a problem, if someone comes along and wants to rezone it into commercial or something else, this is how we're going to handle the problems. And, you know, you look at property we have in the city and other places, it's been empty, vacant, it's been a problem for a long time, but you see a lot of positive things happening with those properties now. And all I'm asking for is a little patience on everyone's part, and to try and understand how the people that live around there feel about how this is going to affect them in the future. Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Goldman? Then I'll entertain a motion to return to regular order.
Second.
There's a motion by Alderman Scannell, seconded by Alderson Dorf, to return to regular order. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed nays, ayes have it. Thank you, Dan. Alderman Nanning?
Thank you, your honor. As a member of the Plan Commission, I originally voted against this. The, this had been before the council at our last meeting with a tie recommendation from the Plan Commission, it was three to three at that point, with one of our members having been absent. And originally, I voted against it largely for the kind of concerns that Alderman Galvin has, has expressed. I've seen many times when properties along University or Main or Mason are underutilized, and someone wants to put used car lots there. And along the other streets, some of them in my district, we also have cases where there are residential properties among other commercial and, and other zoning. So, you know, it's something that I think we've struggled with, and the Plan Commission discussed this pretty thoroughly. I think there were, there were a number of considerations here that changed my mind. One was taking a good look at the block. You have to see on that side of the street, on the north side of the street, you see that there's, there's hospital parking for Bellin Hospital on the west end, and that was created many years ago by taking down a lot of homes that were existing along there to create parking for the hospital. On the other end of the block, you have, across from the Walgreens there, you have the current truck lot that's owned by, by Goldman, by Dan Goldman. So the issue really came to what is realistic to have in between? And, you know, I understand that when we create a vision through a planning process that nobody ever comes in and says, "We want a used car lot." But, you know, the fact of matter is, you've got the hospital parking on one end, you've got an existing truck lot on the other end, so what are you realistically going to get in between? Now, there are homes there right now, many of them have raisin repair orders on, and, you know, I can tell you from experience that I would predict that if we, if we move forward with that, if they're not raised, the property owners will probably do just as much as they have to to get, to bring, to comply with the orders and bring it up to code. I don't think they would really make the properties very attractive for the neighborhood. So I think another point that Mr. Goldman didn't mention tonight is that in their plan, they're taking out five driveways along Mason Street. We all know that's a street of heavy traffic, and taking out five driveways along there, having one entrance on Baird, I think will be an improvement for traffic along Mason. So, you know, it wasn't a decision that came lightly, and there certainly, it's one of those things where you have to balance the pros and cons, but looking at it, I decided to vote for it, and I will again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Zimmer?
Thank you, your honor. You know, people generally don't want to live on busy streets, so residential doesn't do very well in those type of environments. And all one has to do is look at Mason, it's a major arterial that has all kinds of business on it already. Now, we're going to squabble about whether it's going to be some retail store, or whether it's going to be a used car lot? I, I think you're splitting hairs. You know, when I look at this and I say, "Man, this is something very mild compared to something this council passed at the corner of Bellevue and Mason Street, where a whole block was taken out." And there were a lot of, there was a lot of consternation from the people about it. And for a twenty-four-hour affair, business that was going to be there twenty-four hours a day, that isn't the case here. I, I think this is a decent fit, the neighborhood would get a clean, attractive business that's well-planted around it. I, I think it's, we'd be foolish not to accept this, I think it's actually a very good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to concur with the majority of the previous speakers. It was a condemned vacant blight on a major thoroughfare, and every time you drive by it, you shake your head and say, "How long is this going to continue? It just does not look good, especially on such a major road." I see no taxpayer assistance, that's been That's been mentioned and that's a breath of fresh air. You know, we're going to have a, other project coming up here soon. That's going to need taxpayer assistance. They can improve the property, employ more people. Uh, I really didn't see an outpouring of, of opposition to it. And I appreciate the Aldermen of the district, you know, pointing out some of the negatives, but I didn't, I received one call and that person really was neutral. They're glad it's going to be cleaned up. They didn't really necessarily care what went there. So I, I look forward to it being cleaned up and I wish them well. They run a good business. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, that's it for lights. So there's a motion and a second to approve item three. Oh, we'll use the board. Alderman, we got, there you go. All right, and that passes by a vote of nine to two. Thank you. We're good.
Reported the special meeting of the Redevelopment Authority held November thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
All right, there's a motion, Alderman Ryanis, second by Alderman Galvin to approve, uh, the report of the Green Bay Redevelopment Authority for the meeting held on Thursday, November thirtieth. So this is the item on the floor right now. There's only one item. Let's start with Alderman Guy Zimmer.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I wonder if we could, uh, have a review of this by, by our Economic Development Director?
We'll do, oh, Dr. Vank?
Hi, it, it just struck me that we had a, a rather impressive, uh, presentation here just a few months back, uh, showing us about all the great things that were going to happen, or at least were proposed to happen. And it, it just strikes me that this is kind of almost a bait and switch type situation. We were promised, uh, we were shown pictures of brick buildings, uh, pictures of what other places similar, uh, had turned into. And then all of a sudden, all that comes before us is, uh, subsidized housing. Not that there might not be a need for it, but is that really the highest and best use, uh, for this, for this area? Is that what our downtown wants to attract? I mean, the Flats in the Fox is a subsidized housing operation. Now this one is going to be too? I, I had, I think the majority of the people here, uh, voted for it because of the impressive, uh, presentation that was made. And there was really, I, I didn't hear anything talk about putting in subsidized housing. I think they use a mixed use or something like that, but, uh, the pictures that were shown certainly weren't, uh, you know, subsidized housing operations. So I, I guess I'd just like the, our director to respond, uh, to why this is sort of different than what?
Dr. Vank?
When I'm done, uh, and, and, and also, could you review what subsidies are being asked for from the city here? I think I understand, but I'd like you to review it all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dr. Vank?
Sure. Back in August, uh, this, the Redevelopment Authority and the council, uh, approved a development agreement with DDL Holdings, uh, in order to basically move forward with what's being called the Rail Yard Project. And what that contemplated was, uh, basically taking the land north of Kellogg Street, which is just shy of, of sixteen acres, which the Redevelopment Authority held, uh, taking that, purchasing that from the city, uh, for two point six million dollars. Uh, and then looking at, at the time, and the development agreement, uh, specified some projects. And that was to rehabilitate buildings R S and T, uh, which are the warehouses along Broadway. Uh, it was also to construct, uh, twenty new townhomes, uh, along the eastern edge of the property. And it was also, uh, to look at, um, at the RDA was added in over the course of, of this development agreement to add another twenty owner occupied residential units, uh, during this term of the agreement. And then also was to require that the developer install all the public infrastructure necessary to service, uh, these areas. That public infrastructure was extension of Bond Street, extension of Kellogg Street, extension of Donald Driver Way, um, all the utilities that came along with servicing that. And then also is a reservation of a half acre for historical purposes for Fort Howard. So, um, as you know, it's a very big site, sixteen acres. And part of what it discussed in there, it also contemplated future projects and, uh, part of the development green stated, look, there will be, from time to time, other projects that, that came in, uh, that would result, um, in additional development, uh, on the property. Uh, initial concept plan that was presented, you know, basically showed the infrastructure, showed potential layout of some additional new buildings, uh, in that area. Um, I, I think it was pretty clear, as, as, you know, we've discussed, uh, for this property, um, we are building really a new neighborhood in, in downtown and we're extending the neighborhood that, that exists there currently. And in order to make a successful neighborhood, uh, I think we talked about, look, needing, uh, all types of residential, needing entertainment, needing office, um, you know, a whole bunch of mixed uses that really make that place successful. Uh, a lot of the things that were discussed also at that meeting in terms of the, I, I guess, the branding of the area with the rail yard. You know, looked at, yeah, preserving the historical integrity of the warehouses, um, you know, the brick, the metal, the industry, but also in, in the far east side, you know, the history of the railroad that was there, um, and in terms of making a high quality product. So with that, um, again, sixteen acres, a lot to develop. What we have, uh, before you this evening, uh, is a proposal from TWG Development, uh, they're the developer out of Indianapolis, um, proposing to acquire from DDL, uh, just under about four acres in order to construct, um, multi-family apartment units at the northern end of the parcel. Uh, the proposal, uh, looks at, um, a four-story structure with ninety-three units and then two tone home structures with seven units apiece. So for a hundred seven units and then the mix of the rent rates, uh, eighty-five percent will be classified as affordable and fifteen percent will be market rate rents. Um, with that, um, staff supports this project for a number of reasons and, um, the, the term sheet tonight is for the applicant to move forward with their application to WIDA, uh, Wisconsin Housing Economic Development Authority, uh, in order to, uh, fulfill their application for making, um, called LITC, tax credits, to help provide some of the costs in order to build this project. They are looking, um, in terms of making the, the numbers work for the project. Part of what they've requested, uh, is, uh, some home funding, uh, from the Redevelopment Authority. Uh, part of our home funds and the Redevelopment Authority last month, uh, approved putting a hundred thousand dollars, uh, into that project. But they're also looking for, um, some tax increment financing. Currently, uh, our agreement with, uh, we have an existing agreement with DDL for development in the, um, rail yard area, which provides a source, uh, of funds to enable, um, the infrastructure to get built. Um, what they're looking at in, in this, uh, case here is for the increment, the pay-go increment that would have been going, uh, back into the tax increment district, uh, for the city to allocate that share to the project in order to make the project move forward. You know, in terms of, of, of putting this forward, I, I think again, staff supporting for a number of reasons. One, um, you know, the overall product that they're producing, um, we need affordable housing, uh, in the city. Uh, we need good units, we need quality units and we need affordable units downtown. Uh, right now, in the workforce affordable category, um, we are at a hundred percent occupancy. There are not units, uh, available, uh, in the community. And especially there are not units available downtown. And what we really see important in terms of if we're going to have a, a thriving downtown or a thriving community, um, you know, people who are working in, in the service industries, uh, people are working entry level jobs, um, need a place to live. And if we can provide them a good product, um, and a location where they can maybe reduce their transportation cost because they're close to work, um, we definitely would want to support that. The second piece that I feel is very important in terms of this area is of the sixteen acres, I think we have an opportunity to do some development on what I would consider the most marginal piece of, of this property. Um, the very far northern end has limited exposure to Broadway. You've got power lines, you've got the railroad and you've got the perception of a community shelter on, on northern end. Um, in, in terms of what you're able to build there that's able to generate a, a tax base, there's a lot of limitations. And so I think if we are able to move forward with taking the most difficult piece of property and, and moving forward with the project, um, it, it's only going to make other projects that come down the line, uh, move that much more smoothly in terms of, uh, they're on some more of the prime pieces of, of real estate. And so I, I think what is being, uh, proposed, um, you know, fits in well both from the city's perspective, but also from the, the master developer's perspective of, again, that they see, uh, a, a need for, um, providing these types of housing. And with that, I think if you are going to look at, uh, an affordable product, um, it is very important that it is built well and it is managed well. This company has several, uh, projects throughout the Midwest. Uh, this will be their first one that they proposed in Wisconsin. But they, uh, come highly recommended. And also, I, I think in terms of their management, they are committed to having, uh, at least one, probably two, uh, managers on site, uh, to make sure the, the, um, property is managed properly. Um, and they agreed to that in, in the term sheet and would be willing to agree to that in a development agreement that was discussed at, at the Redevelopment Authority. So between the, the, the need for housing, um, you know, the piece of land that we're dealing with and then the, uh, developer itself, you know, those amongst some other things are, are why we support this project.
I just, um, there's a couple of further questions. I guess what, what puzzles me, and maybe you could explain it to me better. It, it seems that if, if you have an area that has high capacity, you see there's almost no units available in the downtown, why would you move to lower end? Why wouldn't you be looking to improve the, the quality of those buildings?
I guess in terms of why, why?
If they're all empty, then you'd say, heck, we gotta, we gotta find something to bring people in there. They're all full. What are we, what are we trying to bring in? Lower income people with lower disposable income? That you would hope you'd have people with disposable income that could help support the, the restaurants, the retail in that area. It just seems to me this is the opposite direction of what we were talking about when we had the presentation.
Sure.
I, I appreciate what you said about, that's the north end and maybe it's a, a little harder to develop, but it seemed to me, the way they put that thing together, it looked pretty, pretty reasonable. And they were, I don't ever remember them talking about that they were going to put low income housing on that four acres there.
Sure, well, and I, I think we need both, uh, in terms of the residential products. And when we look at the market, we can't lump all rentals in together. And, and I think it's important that you look at what's out there for market rate, which, uh, market rate vacancies right now, um, are also extremely low. We're about ninety-seven percent occupied in, in our market, um, which for market, I mean, just pure functionality, people moving in and out, you should probably have five to eight percent vacancy and, and we're, um, close to three. So, yeah, there's a demand for market rate and, and that's something that we've talked about with other developers, uh, with them, uh, writing additional market rate units, uh, on that property. Uh, but then also you have, uh, the segment of those who need affordable housing. And that affordable category is, is a hundred percent occupied at the moment. And so I think, yeah, we would love to continue to bring individuals downtown, um, who have more disposable income, who are able to spend more money a- at the restaurants and the shops. Um, on the other end of it, the people who are working at the restaurants and the shops, they need a place to live. And, and they cannot find housing in our community right now and especially they cannot find it downtown. Um, and so we think it's very important, uh, to be able to provide places to live, uh, for those who are working in those industries.
Well, it's just that on the corner of Broadway and Kellogg, I, I drive by it almost every day. And the Fort Howard Inn that was turned into a homeless shelter that was then remodeled into apartments, I see on the side of the building, they're, they're advertising one bedroom units for eight to nine hundred dollars a month, which is pretty substantial rent for a one bedroom unit. And that's right where we're now going to put lower income people? It, it doesn't make much sense. Oh, and what are we trying to attract to Green Bay? I thought we were going to have a vision of a really upscale sort of thing that would really bring higher income people into the, into the inner city to help promote the whole business districts of, of the area. And this seems to be just the opposite. We're heading in exact opposite direction. In fact, could deteriorate the desire of other people to live in the area. So I don't know, I, I don't know why, why we're starting with this. Maybe if you had some higher end stuff somewhere else, maybe a little farther south, then maybe that would grow down that way. I mean, is really, is that the only place for low income housing? I, I just, and some of it's for, what's the term, transitional housing? In other words, people that don't have anything. And I, I know we need transitional housing. I'm, I'm on a committee that's looking for that, but we weren't necessarily looking for it to an area where we plan to develop something.
Okay. You had your time. You had five minutes.
Well, these are all questions.
Right, I, I, but I took it one fifty-eight, one twenty-two. Now you're at one forty-six. So I want to just hold this to five minutes.
Oh, yeah, well, I'll just have to ask to speak again then. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Alderman Joe Moore?
Thanks, Mayor. I would, I'm going to just speak briefly and then I'm going to ask, uh, Dr. Vank to speak on something, but, uh, the land value in this area is adjacent to the homeless shelter, lime piles, railroad tracks and high tension power lines. When you compare that to the rest of the opportunity over the remaining acreage over there, um, I do believe that this is the highest and best use, uh, in this area. We're getting taxable property. We're getting workforce housing for employees of local businesses, um, an opportunity for a diverse public to enjoy the downtown without having to pay twelve hundred dollars a month in rent. Uh, an opportunity to collaborate with the homeless shelter to provide transitional housing, uh, for less fortunate in our communities that, you know, they do have that opportunity to get back on their feet. Look, there's some potential here to boost the enrollment at West High School, um, bringing in some high density housing in the, in that area. And also stable housing opportunities for folks that might be in slumlord situations. Uh, we know money's owed to the city, how excessive they are from, um, you know, again, like I said, these slumlord situations. And I've been in a lot of these homes. I was in one today on my own street that I, I can't believe people can live in some of these situations. And the amount of rents that they're paying to be in those situations. And here they have an opportunity to go someplace with brand new appliances and, and heater that works and no broken windows and onsite management if something was to break, uh, and they can pay those same rents that they've been paying, um, in these other situations. I think that we, by adding, uh, stipulated review of the construction materials to be used with approval by the RDA, uh, I think adding that into the term sheet helps a lot so that we know we're not just getting a very cheaply built product. One of the arguments that I had, had made while, while there was, you can build it right now and it can look like the Taj Mahal, but if it's not managed well in fifteen years when, when that TIF area expires, we want to make sure that we still have a valuable building there. The city is basically looking to make an investment in this project now with payback fifteen years down the road. And so I think that stipulating the onsite management, um, in this agreement was another very strong, um, you know, motion that we made and, and approved at the RDA as part of this term sheet. Uh, but Director Vank, uh, for you, I guess I would just ask you to address the land value. You put some numbers out with like a cost per square foot or what the value per square foot of that land actually is. And I think that would support my argument on the highest and best use. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Sure. So I, I think to answer Alderman's question, um, you know, when we looked at the whole sixteen acres of the, the rail yard site, you know, we understand in, in terms of, again, you know, the sale price, the, the two point six million, you know, spread across the, the sixteen acres, uh, but we know it's not an even spread. And again, I think that some of the things that you had mentioned in terms of, um, you know, the little access from Broadway, the perception of being near community shelter, rail lines, power lines, um, you know, the power lines themselves, I mean, truly negate the buildability. You know, you're, you can't build under it. Uh, so in terms of the limiting use, uh, factors there, um, you had a lot of things going against. there, you had a lot of things going against it for that. So, you know, if we just take a look at about, you know, our assessor had felt that, again, based on the rents, this would be a little bit lower in terms of the assessment that came in maybe for a market-rate product. But even if you're talking about, you know, $5.5 million of assessed value at buildout, you know, over four acres, you know, you're talking about 1.3, maybe 1.4 million dollars per acre. So at that level, in, again, what you can kind of consider a second or third-tier downtown site, really feel that that is a high value created and the highest and best use, especially if we're looking at something taxable that we're gonna be able to get on that property.
That's all I had, Your Honor.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Vanderleest.
Thank you, Mayor Schmidt. My question is for Dr. Vonck. Can I ask what percentage the developer actually was bringing forward on the table on this project?
Sure. Just pull up a few numbers that I presented. So in terms of total project cost, estimated right now, all-in is about $17.6 million. What they're looking at is providing, most of it will be equity in terms of the low-income housing tax credits. That is what they're seeking from WIDA in that application. That'll be $11.5 million. They will be bringing then on their own some permanent debt, some funds that they'll be providing the financing for, and then also their equity in terms of a development fee. They've discussed that they are willing to defer some of their own costs to the back end of this project, because they would really like to make it work. So with that, in terms of $17 million all-in, the, taking out the equity from WIDA leaves you at about, I'm sorry, about $6 million. And with that, they will be providing that through either financing or straight equity of about $1 million.
What about the federal grants? Are they included in there as well?
That, that's the Lytec, that's the federal money that's given to the states, which they dish out. So that is looking at about $11.5 million of credits for this project.
Also, one other question. As far as the million dollars that they're asking for on the TIF part of it, generally, these projects are pretty profitable, these type of housing projects. They'll fill up relatively quickly. And I feel that a million dollars on the TIF is quite heavy. I think if they cut that in half, you know, that would be a big plus for the city of Green Bay.
You're speaking your bike, Alderman.
In other words, on the, on the TIF part of it, I feel that, you know, a million dollars is quite heavy, considering these projects are profitable. The developer that's coming in, he's, he's getting almost $11.5 million from federal and state, and then he wants another million from the city. I think that we should look at cutting that TIF down, as far as, you know, a million dollars is a lot of money.
Sure. As far as the million dollars, the million dollars is a cap on the payment. It would be a pay-go payment, so it wouldn't be done until after the fact. If you looked at where this would come in right now, again, our assessor's office feel about $5.5 million for the project. We would have to allocate some base value to the project, so if you take out half a million, it's about $5 million of increment. Based on that, it'd be creating about $111,000 of incremental taxes per year over the term of the TID 2033. Right now, it'd be projected on the back end that they would get about $360,000. The reason for the cap was to allow and provide some incentive if they were, you know, to include additional market-rate apartments in here that would push the value higher. And in order to do that, they may need to do additional expense in terms of what they'd be putting into the project, but then the city would be benefiting because we'd be getting incremental property value. So that would allow them to recoup that. But again, it would be on the back end, so it's not us putting any money directly into the project. So for this project, it is all pay-go. The city is not putting anything in upfront.
My question also is, so it'll be 2037 before we'd see anything come back to the general fund, is what you're telling me?
This TID expires in 2033.
2033. So we're looking at a long time. So basically, in between, with our police and fire and Department of Public Works, it taxes the, all departments, basically?
Correct. And I think in terms of having the, the tax increment district there, you know, I, I understand your point in that, look, it's not gonna be until 2033 or 2034 until the city is getting those taxes. But without the TID, this project won't happen, and in 2034, we'll have zero increment. We will have no additional taxes. So I think in terms of foregoing that, it gives us a project to look forward to in 2044, where we can have that windfall. Without this project, I mean, we're gonna be at zero in that time.
See, my problem is that we hold these TIDs way too long. City needs their money now, and it makes just good common sense to shorten the duration of the TIF districts. City's holding the bag for way too long, in my opinion.
It's ten years.
You know, that's including if all these projects are successful. If they're not successful, the city's gonna be holding the bag regardless. So my suggestion to the redevelopment authority is to, you know, cut the time limit on the TIDs and the TIF districts. And, you know, basically, the city needs their money now, within a short duration. 2033 is a long time. 2027's a long time. You know, you look at the duration, that's the point I'm trying to stress here, that, you know, the city's taxed, we can't keep up with things if we keep putting everything that's in the distance, so far in the distance. That's why we had to raise taxes this last, this last year. Because we don't have, we don't have the cash coming in. And I see that it's a problem with the city. And I think that, you know, at best, we could limit what we're offering, you know, be more conservative what we're offering. Most of these projects on a housing project, I can't see supporting, you know, giving tax breaks to housing, you know, this type of housing. They're all successful, basically pretty successful entities. You take the Tunins, they have, the Tunins on the east side there. They have a big project there, and they're pretty full. I'm sure they're, they're doing well. And this is just, you know, a lot of money, I think, that's handed over, and not coming back to the city very fast. And I think it should be done differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, Randy Scannell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the city has many housing needs, and we should be looking at all those housing needs, including in our downtown area. And the presentation that Paul Bosher gave us from DDL a few months ago, those, those projects are still ongoing. I mean, we're still looking at high-end townhouses, and all those things are still, are still happening. So we're still gonna have high-end residential in the area. This project, we knew when we first took on the rail yard, that there are parcels of this property that are not as desirable as others. And I think the use for this one is gonna be very difficult to find something. And this is, and this property is not only low-income and transitional, but it's mixed. It's a range of rentals. And I think, considering the new community, how they could, they're looking forward to this, they're looking forward for the transitional housing. It's something the city needs. We need to look at, as I said, housing for everybody. I'm concerned about turning our downtown into a gentrified area. It should be, our downtown should be for everybody. The TIF involved is just, it's, this is money they are generating that's going back to them. So I don't have a problem with TIF being used on this project, because it's a pay-go. It's money they're generating that they're gonna be getting back to make the project go. As far as the developer, he's a first-rate developer. I mean, the properties they have in other states are well-run, they're quality places. This is the kind of developer we should be welcoming into our community. I think they do a great job, and I wish this project a lot of success, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tom Sladek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I was reading over the proposed term sheet, there were a few things that popped out and provoked questions in my mind, so may I direct those to Director Vonck?
Right. Yes, sir.
Kevin, the first one is on the recitals portion, the very first part of the term sheet, on page 4B, paragraph I, it says, "The parties work in good faith to negotiate and execute a development agreement by December 1st of 2018." And I don't recall ever seeing a proposed term sheet in the past where it was gonna take a year to get from term sheet to development agreement. Why is it so long?
Sure. One, I added some time, just because every project seems to be more complicated than we initially anticipate, and to give that, that extra bit of time. The biggest reason has to do with WIDA and applying for the tax credits. Those applications are, go into WIDA, and they're due on Friday. WIDA does not render a decision on those until March. Sometimes they've held those until April or May. So the developers said, look, without those tax credits, we're not going to move forward. And so we can't have discussions between them and the city, or they can't have discussions with DDL about putting something together, really until they know if they have the tax credits or not. And they may not know that until late in the next spring. That would allow some time to basically flesh out the details of a development agreement with enough time to do so. I anticipate it would be done much sooner than that. They would like to be in the ground next year or by that time. But again, as things get complicated, that just allows for additional amount of time based on when we're gonna hear back from WIDA.
So it does say that we're gonna basically keep this property on reserve for these people for a full year?
Not necessarily we, because we have that development agreement with DDL. Right now, it is DDL's property to manage. And so TWG and DDL will have their own discussion, and we will have to look at amending that master development agreement in terms of, here's another project coming in. So for DDL, what does that mean in terms of additional funds to provide for the infrastructure as part of that development agreement? They have worked in good faith, and I think DDL has said, look, we can wait until March or April to kind of figure out if you get the WIDA tax credits to move forward with this. So that's a separate agreement between those two parties. But again, you know, city has been involved in most of these discussions, that we feel, again, given that the limitations of this property and the promise of this project, that that is worth waiting for, in terms of holding it in reserves. But it's not us holding it in reserve, it's the developer, master developer, DDL, who will be holding it.
Okay, thank you. Second question I have has to do with page 4C. Now we're under the section of tax increment financing, and I guess would be paragraph, sub-paragraph D under B, it says, "The city shall first use the TIF increment to cover its annual debt service obligation for the project grant." And I could find no definition or reference anywhere else in this document to the project grant. What is that?
Sure. So there is no grant for this project, but we do have a project grant for the master development agreement between us and DDL. And so we just wanted to make sure that it was clear that in terms of money that we would put in for infrastructure for the agreement with DDL, that that debt service gets covered first before there's any pay-go. So just...
And that, that amount was how much, 2-point-some million, is that right?
That amount was initially the, what we provided, the $2.1 million. And in that development agreement, it referenced about future projects. And it said, okay, if we bring in a future project, we will provide another $100,000 towards infrastructure for every million dollars of increment you create. So if this project comes in and creates another $5.5 million worth of increment, we then, to DDL, we would have to amend that agreement to say, look, here's an additional project, we will provide another $550,000 towards infrastructure for DDL. I just wanted to make sure that it's referenced in both agreements, because this talks about our pay-go, that to make sure that if for some reason, this project would come in less than 5.5, it would come in at 4, that we make sure we're paying off that debt service to DDL before we start talking about any pay-go either to DDL or to, to this development.
So the debt service would be on 2.1 plus some additional amount based on the value of this project?
Correct.
And the TIF increment would go first towards paying the debt service on all of that?
Correct.
And only after that would there be funds available for the pay-go?
Correct. So the way that development agreement reads, you pay the debt service first. If there's any funds left over, that pay-go is split 50% to the developer, 50% to the TID. This request here is for the city's portion, the TID portion, to also go in to the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
One additional question, the very first paragraph in the section on tax increment financing. That's on 4B?
Yep.
And I know we've, I've seen this language in previous term sheets, where it says that "The developer shall provide an independent analysis from a consultant expert in TIF to justify to the satisfaction of the city and RDA the developer's qualification and need for TIF." I would like to see us on this project, request that.
Okay.
Can you commit to that?
Yeah. And I think I've mentioned to some others, in terms of, you know, where we're at with the term sheet, it's important that there will be another development agreement that comes through, but I can make sure that the, to note to the developer that they would like to see that for, I think you would have that as a condition of approving a development agreement, that they see that. Is that correct?
I'd like to see us do that on this one. Thank you. I have nothing else.
All right, thanks.
Alderman Steyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. A few things were mentioned about this property, that it is strained to the north as far as utilities and any number of things on that area. There was a recent report done, the ALIS report in Brown County, you may have heard of that. ALIS stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. At the, at the present time, there are 42,358 housing, rental housing units in the city. 49% are rented by people who suffer from poverty or that percentage of ALIS. It's basically, people cannot afford housing in this city. So with that being said, all I'm trying to say is that we do need a mix. We do need a mix downtown. We really do. There are so many high-end places in this community. We need, we need a mix. That's, it's a strained piece of property. And I'm thinking, you know, we were arguing about what's the best and highest and best use for that property. I feel that something like this would work well. You know, as far as the TIF, you know, maybe we can work some things out with that. But my feeling is that this project will pay for itself in the long run. So I am in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Dorf.
Thank you, Your Honor. Although most of what I have to say has been said already, it won't stop me from saying it again. I think that this is a very good proposal. I'm very supportive of this project. All different kinds of income levels, people, citizens in Green Bay have all different kinds of income levels. And definitely, I'm in favor of some affordable housing for the workforce. And we have people working downtown that, that need to live downtown, because it will reduce the amount of money they need to pay for transportation. So it makes a lot of sense to me. I love the idea of having a manager onsite, even someone mentioned more than one possibly, to make sure that that environment will enhance the quality of life, to make sure that things are cleaned up, that there's no graffiti, that there's, the landscaping is cared for, so that it becomes a place where people take pride... so that it becomes a place where people take pride in living and then take care of it because it looks like a very nice place to live. I look at the artist renderings of the kind of buildings that are going to go in and they're lovely. And I think that people deserve to live in a nice place, in a nice area. And if we can provide some of that affordable housing, I'm all for that. So, this proposal makes a lot of sense to me and I will be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Chris Wery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All good comments so far, some more than others. My observations, I guess, would be in looking at the design, I'm concerned about the parking for the apartments and the townhomes. It looks like it's all exterior. Am I misreading that?
Preliminary rate now, primarily most of it would be exterior. There's consideration, depending on cost, for potentially some garages and interior space between the large complex and the community shelter.
Thank you. Because that would be a big concern for me. You know, we're getting $12.6 million in subsidy, which is a ton. You know, the 11.5 in the WIDA and the million in the TIF and the $100,000 in the home, that's $12.6 million. I think we can do better for someone who, you know, we're trying to give them a better place to live and they can't even get a place to park their car. That's number one. And then, number two is I think there's very limited green space if people have families, little kids, or want to go out and play, or somebody wants to throw the ball around. You know, if you look at it, they're going to have to play in the parking lot pretty much or go play at the homeless shelter. I think we can do better there. Seems like we tried to pack as much into this little spot as we could, except someplace to park, you know, where it's sheltered and some green space. I think we can do much, much better. As I mentioned, that $12.6 million in subsidy should be going to giving not only just a place to live, but someplace that you can raise a family and have a decent place to park with and just scrape your car off and be in the elements all the time. I don't think it's very family-friendly and it seems like a mismatched piece of the puzzle to jam in here. So, right now, I'm not, I'm not prepared to vote for this. Thanks.
Did you want to comment on that? Because he's the last light.
Sure. Alderman Murray, just in terms of, one of the discussion points, I think twofold. One, in terms of, I think we want to maximize the value of developed land per acre in this area. So, in terms of, I think, yes, in terms of the density that we've placed here, you know, it is put in there in a way that maximizes that land use. With that, I think the trade-off is, you know, you're looking at the master development agreement of, you know, making sure that there's that half acre that's reserved in there for historical purposes that becomes part of a park. There's walkways, there's trails that are in there. I think initially in the development presentation that was done in August, you know, looking at the stormwater pond and then how water features can be integrated into open green space, you know, along with other commons areas. You know, I think providing those options, I think being very close to Fort Howard School, you know, offering some additional green space there, provides some of those things in terms of having outlets for recreation and green space.
Thank you. Alderman Zima?
Thank you. Before I ask a couple more questions, I don't know if there's anybody in the audience that would like to address us on this, but I'd make a motion to open the floor for interested parties in case there is.
All right. So, we have a motion second to open the floor to hear from interested parties. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, ayes have it. We're discussing the report of the redevelopment authority and that's for the term sheet for TWG Development. Those are the Broadway law offices. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to that item? Anyone want to speak to that? Just step up to the podium? You step up to the podium here. If you state your name and address for the clerk, please.
Adrian Chudal, 1813 Eleventh Avenue. I hear what you're saying with, you know, helping poorer people. I never made a lot of money myself, my life. But I think a lot of your points are wrong, to tell you the truth. I did help build my, helped my brother build a billion-dollar company, U.S. Water and Utility Chemicals. All right. So, now he takes care of me, basically. There is a couple issues about it. For one, if you guys make 80 to $100,000 a year, you're not going to be seen with people that make $20,000 or less a year. All right. Usually hang out with people more in your tax bracket, stuff like that. So, they're poorer people, all right? From, living here in Green Bay most of my life, I grew up, you know, grade school football, high school football, stuff like that. Definitely a Packer backer, you know? But what I hear is that you're trying to attract more poorer people into our city from Chicago, Michigan, Milwaukee, maybe, you know? I always looked at this, Green Bay, as a, you know, healthy community, upper skill community, more or less, all right? And what I see is what the projects that you're trying to do with the old railroad is attract more poor people, all right? Which ain't going to help the city, in my opinion, you know? I was never rich myself, like I said. And I really think, you know, yeah, it might help people like me, but I disagree with it myself, you know? If you want to help people, you got to get them into better jobs where they can afford more, not trying to give them cheap housing, which is nice, you know, yes, it is. But you got to have a person make their own way too, you know? I busted my butt from my cousin's farm in Abrams. I sent out there, by my ma, eight years old, to work on the farm. And I can work 80 hours a week, no problem. You know, it kills my body nowadays, but hey, I'll work. All right? And I just think if you're going to do something with that, you want to have a nicer residential neighborhood, kind of like Guy Zima was saying, you want to attract people into the city that's going to spend money, you know? Not people that are going to come into the city and try ripping off other people, you know, because they don't have the money, you know? When I was a kid, I caught people coming over to my ma's house with Christmas gifts. I grabbed whatever I could there and started hitting them with it, you know? They got, get them to stop, you know, and drop the gifts, which they did, you know? And I grew up, you know, like I said, and my, my brother got, you know, big company. And I can see the difference, you know? How people grow up from childhood and everything. And I do got to stand for Guy Zima on this one.
All right.
All right. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? What's that? Did anyone else want to speak to this?
Janet Angus, 1403 Shirley Street in Green Bay. I have some concerns about this project and I voiced those concerns with some of you privately prior to this meeting. I went over the tape of Mao and Associates' presentation. And what I found is nowhere in that tape do they talk about subsidized housing, which is what you're basically putting in down there. I think if you do the math, you've got 107 units, 93 units plus another 14 townhouses. Eight of those are going to be vouchers and 85% of the units are going to be subsidized, which means you're going to have 91 units that are subsidized housing out of that total 107 units. That's a lot of subsidized housing. I think you're building a housing project. When I got out of the Mao and Associates' presentation, I was really excited about. I was happy for Broadway. I was happy for that district because I really felt that you were going to bring upscale to the area, to downtown Green Bay, not, as this prior gentleman said, more poor housing. Look at Western Avenue. Look at the Admiralty Department buildings on the west side. I've just pulled some stats on those from the police department with criminal activity that goes on in those units in that area and project what's going to happen to Green Bay and that neighborhood on Broadway in 10 or 15 years. Depending on what you decide to do as far as the economic diversity in that area. I have some concerns and, like I said, originally, when I sat through that presentation for a number of hours, I was so impressed. I really, really thought that this was going to be a great development for that area. But like I said, I think you're building a housing project. And history does repeat itself. So, in 15 years, I hope everybody can go over and look at that project that you're building right now and say to our kids who will be living in our community that this was a really, really good way to spend TIF money. And would this developer be doing this project but for the tax credits? How's he going to make his money? It's not a private development. You maybe need a grocery store underneath the wires. Maybe there's something else you could do with that. I don't know. But it just seems to bring 91 units of subsidized housing and out of those 91 units, eight are going to be vouchers. That's, that's, that's a lot of subsidized housing in Green Bay, a lot more. I think right now, Andy Nicholson's on the committee, the county, regarding the voucher program in our county, one of the top counties in the country as far as poor housing and vouchers and integrated community services. I don't know what the numbers are. I haven't looked at that for a while. But we do have a lot of subsidized housing in this area already and you need to look at that and you need to consider it before you put 91 more units into this small, small area on Broadway that was basically, you know, when this, when this went through with the county, with you earlier, it was a beautiful presentation. Beautiful presentation, brick buildings, limestone buildings. I was, I was really impressed. I thought, "I want to go live there." But the rendering that I looked at from TGW is not that. And so, I beg you to be cautious in putting this in and put some parameters around it so that you can put in a good project, Mr. Galvin. I would hope that you really, really do that.
Thank you.
I hope you looked at it. Well, you were, you were laughing. You were smiling at me, so...
He was not.
Well, that's my perception. Like I said. Okay. Well, hopefully you were, you were paying attention and listening to my comments. I would appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this project?
David Vanderleest, 146 Alpine Drive. I'm not in favor of this project. I look at the TIF that we need to put this project together, being a million dollars. Recently, you guys have been looking at a wheel tax to try to raise $2 million and that's to fix all of our bad infrastructure in the city, which we can all agree is a lot. This will be, you know, half of that value for what we would collect on a wheel tax that you guys have been taking up. I think when we put this many people downtown, like Janet said, it's going to create a lot more police calls. Do we have the resources for this? For the added services that are going to be needed from the residents that will, the services that will fall on the county and the city? Have we looked at that? Adding, you know, 890, 90 residents on, you know, low-income subsidized housing, those people also use other services. So, there's going to be a larger burden to the community than just the TIF district. I think that when I look at this, if you decide to pass it, there's two things I'm concerned about, the audit provisions that you have from the city to look at this. I think we've learned from past developments that I would sure up in any agreement you're going to have with developers that you have a good right to audit the project. And that's all I really have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this item? Anyone else?
Jim Sanderson, 417 Cambridge Street. When I look at this and I see the size of the apartment building, if that building was being built to be a office building, I would think, "Well, that's a reasonable use of the land there." There isn't a lot of green space around the building, but there is a sizable parking area, you know, for an office building. That, that looks like a very good plot there, but look on the east end of that apartment building, that's just a very small piece of property there for, you know, children and whoever else wants outside recreation. The townhouses, are they going to be playing in the back of those townhouses or are those pieces of property behind the townhouses, is that going to be considered the townhouses' private backyards? I just think that, you know, density is a good thing when you're talking about commercial property, but the density of this apartment building, I think, like Janet said, it resembles a lot of what you see in the bigger cities that people look upon as kind of a miserable situation where there's very little green space around the buildings. So, I don't know. I think it's, it's setting kind of a poor image, you know, for that end of the project to have that little bit of priority put onto green space if that building is going to have quite a few families living in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I'm sorry I forgot something. David Vanderleest, 146 Alpine Drive. I think it's very important, the way this term sheet is written, it's basically a blank check for the environmental studies or the environmental cleanups that might be needed. And I believe we all went through this with Walmart a couple of years ago. And I remember with my discussions with Lisa Nelson, who was heading that project up, that Walmart estimated the cleanup could cost as much as 2.6 million. So, your little term sheet TIF here could actually equal 3.2 million if those environmental numbers that we were given from Walmart a couple of years ago are correct. So, the way this is written as a blank check on the cleanups, you might want to put some provisions in there to limit your exposure on this matter if you decide to approve it, which I don't agree with. Personally, I think it's an attempt to create a voting block in a very low-voting district. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain a...
Motion to both courts.
All right. It's a motion by Alderman Scannell, second by Alderman Stoyer, to return to regular order. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, ayes have it. And Alderman Zima, you had the floor.
Thank you, Ryan. I had one more question for Mr. Bonk. What is the sale price of this, of this four acres?
That is yet to be determined between the developer and DDL. With that, based on that the city is guaranteeing the loan with DDL to purchase the property, the city will have to approve the land sale.
Well, that was my interest. But, so we don't know, the developer doesn't know what he wants to pay for the land?
He does and that's a discussion between the developer, the two developers at this point.
Well, okay, thank you very much. I just can't quite understand why we're subsidizing a housing industry that's really booming. It's very hard to get an apartment now in Green Bay. Houses are selling like hotcakes. You see a sign go up, it's sold in a week, sometimes a day. Housing is at a, at a premium right now. And here, we're trying to bring in more subsidized housing. That's where we want to stick our money? That's what we use our TIF money for, to bring in more low-income housing? Doesn't make much sense to me. If you remember, Walmart was going to build north of Kellogg, was going to fill that up. Now, instead of Walmart, a grocery store... Now, instead of Walmart, a grocery store that was badly needed in the area, we're gonna put subsidized housing? Really? Are we trying to lift up the area, or are we just trying to give up on the area? I, I really think that this has gotta be thought out more. And, you know, when the highest and best use is gonna be subsidized housing, how do you expect something with a higher and better use to go in next to it? You really think they're gonna go from subsidized housing to expensive townhouses? I don't think so. You're almost gonna diminish the rest of the development. I know I had thought that we should've opened up this area instead of giving it to a developer who's gonna deal with developers and, and take a commission off of it. I thought we should open up and see what the, what the private market has to say about it. But this, this just doesn't cut it. I, I can't support this tonight, but I'll, I'll make a motion to send it back to see if we can do something better than this. I guess one other question to Mr. Vaughn. This environmental cleanup, it was described as kind of an open checkbook. So, in other words, the TIF subsidy could go even higher then?
No, that is, that is not correct. So in terms of environmental cleanup, we have, again, a master development agreement with DDL for the entire property. Part of the project grant financing, the project grant is for infrastructure, environmental remediation. Those costs are born upon DDL. So it is DDL's responsibility as the property owner to work on the environmental cleanup. We have done phase one, phase two. We have worked very closely with the brownfields consultant on, on what is there. We've talked with the N R about the options for remediation in that area. And I can say, those, those numbers are gonna be well, well south of, of anything, you know, close to two million dollars. But with that, those go back to DDL. Those do not have anything to do with, with this project.
So who has to pay for the cleanup?
That is to be determined between the two development entities when DDL, in terms of what their conditions are, or I should say TWG, what their conditions are for the purchase of this piece of property. They can purchase it based on environmental and say, okay, we'll purchase that at this price and, and we'll do the cleanup. Or DDL can say, look, we'll deliver you a remediated site, and this is the price of it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't their estimates, they were about four years ago, when Walmart was thinking of building there, weren't the estimates something like one and a half to two million dollars for remediation?
That was before my time, but I believe those estimates exist out there. We have been relying under our work with both Stan Tech, who has worked with us on our, our brownfields grant in terms of providing some estimates for mediation. And they have also been working with DDL privately to discuss what some of those costs are. I do not think DDL would've moved ahead with the development agreement if they felt those costs were exorbitant to precluding them from doing any type of development at the property.
Well, I, I think it needs to go back, and we need to have a developer that's gonna try to do something more than low-income housing with very little parking, very little green space. I, I, I think it will be, it'd end up being a blight on trying to develop the rest of the site. Thank you.
Second for discussion. I can make one.
Yeah, I, go ahead.
I think two, two things with this. One, I mean, we are dealing with a, a term sheet. Either way, a development agreement would have to come back to this council, and a development agreement would only come back if the developer receives the tax credits in order to move forward with this project. As I mentioned earlier this evening, the application is coming up this week, and so if they don't have a commitment from the city, then they will not apply, and this project will, will not happen. If I may just, sure, just, just for a minute, I just wanted to just reiterate a few things for council quickly that were spoken by the public, just to reiterate some facts. I think just for one, I mean, I don't wanna go through TIF one oh one, but look, the money developer creates, it's the developer building the new project. It's worth more than it was there before. They pay more in taxes. We allow those taxes to go back to the developer. There is absolutely no levy money whatsoever in this project. None. So I just wanna make sure that clear. We're not spending less on anything else. This is all from the tax increment district. In terms of these busloads of quote-unquote people coming up for low-price housing, look, if somebody's gonna move here, they're gonna move here for more than just housing. They're gonna move here for employment, they're gonna move here for family. That, that's just not the case. These people are already living here. And if you look at what the incomes are for this, yes, there are eight units that, that will have vouchers. The remainder of units, if you look at the incomes, they'll be at fifty to sixty percent of the median income for this area. So for somebody alone that's making eleven to fourteen bucks an hour, for a family of four, that's sixteen to twenty bucks an hour. That's somebody working over at Mr. Gobin's place in, in terms of those salaries. So, and, and what we're talking about, I mean, these are good, hard-working Green Bay people that will be living in these units. So I, I think it's just important to, to note some of those things. And then the third, in terms of, you know, any prohibition on, on mix of future projects, we just had a developer, again, DDL bite off fifteen acres of prime development property. I, I don't think they would move forward, or the city would move forward with the project that they felt encumbered future development. And I think you look at the east side, in terms of projects that have come over here along the river, again, Flats on the Fox was before my time, but in terms of providing, you know, affordable housing, that project did not stop City Deck Landing, and that project did not stop Metro. Two very successful projects that added, you know, close to another two hundred market-rate units right on the riverfront. We don't see any case why, again, this project here would not preclude any additional market-rate units o- over on the west side.
All right. So we got the motion and the second on the floor for referral. Alderman Duane, you wanna talk about referral and?
Yeah, me too. I'm gonna support it for one reason. And I tell you, there's a lot of, a lot of questions, a lot of good questions today that they really didn't have answers to. It, it seems like we bring these projects forward and on something that we wanna do, but there's no clear agreements on anything from both parties, all three parties, on what they're gonna do. And there's, I don't know if there's anybody here from on Broadway, I, I noticed nobody came up to talk about this, but I remember distinctly how that is something that they didn't wanna see there. They really cut down Walmart, and they didn't want something low-end, and they weren't looking for this type of project. And they didn't wanna see all that parking in back, and that was one of the biggest things, just seeing those cars out back in an area that we're really trying to make an elite downtown. And Mayor, you, you spoke on that highly. And so right now, there's just too many unanswered questions. In the end, if this comes to be a good project and something that everybody can support, get behind, the community, give me a little bit more time to make some phone calls, check with people. But just too many unanswered questions, and, and my main concern is, we were really gonna do something with this area. Walmart just wasn't the answer, and then we were kinda like going back to the same thing. So for that reason, I will, I'd like to see it go back. Thank you. Just for questions. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Alderman Vance, you understand if this goes back, that's, it doesn't happen, because the tax credits are due, the application is due Friday. I just wanna, I don't know if you were here when Kevin said that, okay. Alderman Moore.
Thanks, Your Honor. Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, Alderman, Alderman Duane is referring to more time, ask some questions, and in the end, but, I mean, this project is, has, you know, came to the RDA. We've, we've had it, there's been time for questions. But there isn't now, because, yeah, this is due Friday. So voting to refer it, votes to kill it. There is no, let's see what comes back. That doesn't happen. Voting to refer it kills the project in its entirety, and we're back to a vacant property out there without a project. And that's where we're at. And on top of that, I, I'm just gonna call this out and say, I can't imagine what the makeup of this council would look like if minorities, blacks, Mexicans, poor people, and anybody else would get out to the voting booths and vote. Because I would, I would love, love to see, you know, what would happen. All these people, look, subsidized housing? I, yeah, I'm gonna stumble for a minute.
Yep. All right. This is on referral, so Alderman Scannell. Again, no, I know. He had the floor. Alderman Scannell.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I, I'd like to second what Alderman Moore was getting at. The rap on poor people here is completely unjustified, and, and there are many hard-working people that are gonna, that need this housing. We have a need for this kind of housing. And to say that this is going backwards, I completely disagree with that. To say that this parking lot is comparable to what Walmart wanted for parking, again, they were gonna take over all seventeen acres, and the vast majority of that was gonna be a parking lot. There's no comparison between the two. To, to send this back kills the project. I think this is a very good project, and, and we still have time. This isn't the, the last time, it'll be coming before us. We have time to get some questions, if you still have some questions. I think this just project deserves a chance to go forward. It, it deserves that. For myself, I, you know, it's a quality company. This is a quality company. This, they're not making some kind of rinky-dink of, of place to just make a bunch of money off of people. This is a, gonna be a good project and fills a need in this community of hard-working people. So I support this, and I do not support referral back.
Alderman Vanderleest.
Thank you, Mayor Schmidt. From just looking at the project, they don't have any garages for people for their cars and things, and as far as the green space and things, I think the developer could put together a better project as far as what's being presented here. Basically, if you look at, first people, you know, they have a, I have some housing near me that they don't have any parking, and the first thing that they say is, I'm getting out of here, can't even park my car inside, can't protect my car. If they get a nice car, they gotta leave it outside. I, I think that, you know, from, if you look at the front of this on, on building A, it looks like a barracks, basically. I was in the military, it looks like a barracks to me. And nothing against, you know, their rendering here, but I, I think if they had places for the cars, and I think they could do a better job as far as how they're displaying what they're gonna be building. Once they build it, and if we approve it tonight, it's gonna be built.
No, that's not true. Don't, don't think that. If you approve it tonight, they apply for the tax credits. If they get the tax credits, they're gonna come back here, and we're gonna look at a development agreement. So just don't, I don't want you to think that.
Okay, we'll take that back.
All right.
Thank you.
Alderman Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can tell you that my concerns are about the project and not who lives there. I, I don't want my opinion to be belittled or mischaracterized. So let's start with that. But I do have to say, I'm sure we all, you know, after you've been on council long enough, you really do start enjoying the rush job act. I mean, I, it never gets old. I love it. You get something and you have to approve it or not, and that's it. Boy, makes you wring your hand and say, well, we gotta approve it. I mean, man, otherwise we end up looking like whatever they're trying to insinuate, I guess. I made my points pretty clear, and, and, you know, as Janet Ingers, you know, she called it a housing project, and that, you know, is that fitting? The rail yard housing project, no garages, very cramped, little green space. We risk building a, you know, I don't know, questionable, medium-quality project? I, I'm not sure. That could deteriorate quickly. I mean, I, I was a mailman for eight years. I've been all around Howard, Green Bay, Schwab, and then you see projects that are put up. Pretty soon, you know, new manager comes in, and they're not, not what they once were pretty quickly. You don't want that to happen here. They might say they have great management, but that, new managers come and go, new owners come and go. So I, do we want five hundred thousand dollar-plus condos, a stone's throw from the rail yard housing project that, as presented, doesn't seem very appealing? Just seems like a bad recipe for this location. I think we can do better, and I'm not gonna be rushed about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Vanderleest, can turn your light off. Alderman Weary. Alderman Duane.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor.
On referral.
Yeah, I, I gotta tell you, when I'm told, you know, when I hear that from other Aldermen, it, it really kinda just, I, I gotta smile. These attacks have been coming left and right recently. It has nothing to do with housing. I voted for every housing project since I've been here for twelve years, Flats on the Fox. There's not one I voted against. And Alderman Moore, I know you just whispered something, what's, you got one that I voted against?
You got the floor. Go ahead.
Because I know, Mayor, I helped you on a lot of these.
They helped the city, but, you know, okay.
Okay, well, you.
I supported him, yes.
Yeah. And, you know, it has nothing to do with LoHo, I, you know, I, I support, I don't care who it is that comes into our neighborhoods, as long as they're, they're friendly, they're clean, they don't bother people, you know, they're all good neighbors. But to say some of the things that were said, it's just ridiculous. To say this project's gonna fall if it, if it doesn't do it tonight, they can bring something back at any time, any time. It doesn't have to be before the end of the, end of the year. You can bring back something, you can make all kinds of deals. So there's always ways of doing something. I understand.
All right. Thank you. And the last slide is Alder Persendorf, on referral.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm against referral. I, I personally am more concerned about shelter for people than shelter for cars at this point. I also have the understanding that the reason we would like to vote for this tonight, if it's possible to vote for it tonight, is because there's a grant application that's due on Friday. And if it's, if we don't get this done tonight, then that grant application can't go in. And my further understanding is that then the development agreement is going to come back to us, and we possibly can make some changes on it. So I'd like to see this go forward, and then certainly, if there can be garages in the future, great. But I, again, I'm more concerned about shelter for people. Thank you.
All right. So use the board on this. Okay, Alderman Scannell, your light wasn't on, but, all right, go ahead.
Uh, just to be clear, my comments were not directed at anyone. They were directed at comments made, and for the record, I don't have a garage. Thank you.
All right. Use the board. A yes vote sends it back, and no vote keeps it here. This is on referral. And that fails on a vote of five to seven. Okay, you guys got it?
Your honor, this comes back to its office, though.
Yes. All right. So now we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this. Now, use the board. Yep. No, yeah, yeah, you are. And that passes on a vote of eight to four. All right, thank you. Okay, clerk.
We're on to report of the Traffic, Bicycle, and Pedestrian Commission.
All right, there's a motion by Alderman Duane, second by Alderman Scannell, to approve the report of the Traffic, Bicycle, and Pedestrian Commission for the meeting held on Monday, November twentieth. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Seeing no lights, all in favor of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, the ayes have it, and that report's been approved.
Report of the Improvement and Service Committee.
Right, there's a motion by Alderman Scannell, second by Alderman Galvin, to approve the report of the Improvement and Service Committee. That was for their meeting held on November twenty-ninth. Any items in this report you wish to handle separately? Seeing no lights, all in favor of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, the ayes have it, that report's been approved.
Report of the Protection and Welfare Committee.
It's approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Scannell, second by Alder Persendorf, to approve the report of the Protection and Welfare Committee for their meeting held on Monday, November twenty-seventh. Any items in this report you wish to handle separately? Seeing no lights, all in favor of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, the ayes have it, that report's been approved.
Report of the Protection and Welfare Committee granting operator licenses.
All right, there's a motion by Alderman Scannell, second by Alderman Galvin, to approve the report granting the operating licenses. Are there any names on here you wish to abstain from or handle separately? All right, seeing no lights, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, the ayes have it, and those licenses have all been granted.
We're on to resolutions. You may enter suspension of the rules, adopt resolutions nine through sixteen, together with unroll call vote.
And holding fourteen.
Second.
Okay, all right. So there's a, a motion and a second to suspend the rules for that purpose, all in favor of suspension, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. And those opposed nays, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. All right, Alderman Moore.
Your Honor, I just want to disclose that item number 12, resolution for vacation, includes one of my properties.
Good.
Shouldn't affect anything as far as voting, though. Thank you.
Do you want to abstain from there?
No, I'll hold.
Okay, you're just stating that for the record. Okay. So this is nine through 13, 15, and 16. Right?
Correct.
Because we're holding 14 till the 19th. All right, so we need to use the board on this. This is resolutions nine through 13, 15, and 16. Alderman Weary. All right, those pass unanimously. Thank you.
We're on to ordinance's first reading, you may enter suspension of the rules, advance ordinance's 17 through 20 to a third reading.
All right, there's a motion, Alderman Zima, second by Alderman Sladek, to suspend the rules for that purpose, all in favor of suspension, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nays, the ayes have it. Entertained a motion to advance, please.
Second.
By Alderman Scannell, second by Alder Person Dorf. We can do this on a voice vote, all in favor of advancement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed nays, the ayes have it, those have been advanced to the third reading.
We're on to ordinance's third reading, you may adopt ordinance 21 with a roll call vote.
Just, we'll use the board here. Oh, I'm sorry. A motion, Alderman Scannell.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Dorf, to approve item 21. Use the board, yeah. You threw me. Alderman Nicholson, this is on resolution.
Is there a change?
No, this has gone from the. First to the third.
Well, that I know.
Yeah. Has there been a change from the first to the third, Steve?
No.
No.
No, it's just regular procedure law.
You want to know what the first reading was.
Is there a change in the code?
Yeah, the parking regulations have changed. Anytime that we change a parking, any parking zone, we have to change the order.
Thanks, Steve. Got it.
All right, and that passes on a, you may have a vote. Alderman Moore.
I'm sorry, I had stated, resolution 12 applied to me, it's actually ordinance 19. It was the vacation of Webster, or, I'm sorry, the plot of Right Away for Webster, not the vacation of the property on Radisson.
Fine, and we're just noting that.
Again, just for note.
Okay, just for note. We'll put that in the record. All right. We are going on to the committee as a whole, an update with some possible litigation regarding the OSG. Senior staff to be excused. Yep, that's what we're gonna do. So I'm just gonna excuse senior staff. So there's a motion, Alderman Zima, to move into closed session, and he'll read the script. See you guys tomorrow. Okay, Commander, it sounded like the county board here. All right, there's a motion, Alderman Zima, second by Alderman Weary. Use the board on this to move into closed session, please.
Oh, we have to do the vote? Joe?
All right.